The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Alder member Starr?
Yeah.
Member Plackey?
Yeah.
Member Whittit? Member Paulson?
Yeah.
Member Carrigan? Mayor Varner?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a call.
Very good. Welcome to all the visitors. Glad to see some people out there. Wonderful. Alden, would I make a motion to amend the agenda to include the presentation from the Four Boy Tree Service? Good. Take a second. A motion and a second. I'm Alden with Whittit. All in favor? Five zero, so we will have the presentation. Thank you. All right, first up, the mayor's report. Just a couple of things.
Consent agenda. The consent agenda?
Oh, yes. Consent agenda. Alden with it.
I move that we said.
Anything to go on in the amendments or anything since you were president of the previous? Finally, Missouri? If there's anything to go on the previous one, fine. Okay, very good. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Take it. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Five zero, consent agenda is approved. Now, the mayor's report, just a couple of things. One, I want to remind everybody out there that filing begins tomorrow at eight AM at City Hall. If you're interested in being a candidate for either boards one, two, three, or the mayor's seat, I encourage all of anybody that's interested in running, please file for it. Competition's good. It's healthy. Gives citizens options, choices. It's a good, healthy thing. So let's start tomorrow morning at eight o'clock and runs through December 30.
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty to five.
Thirty till five o'clock PM. And the other thing I wanted to mention, again, was a congratulations once again to the Spar family and the Odessa celebrating sixty-five years of service to this town. That's quite a feat today's, in today's world. A lot of newspapers around or they're not able to make it. Spar families, they make it and they serve the community well. And just wanted to say I really appreciate the open house the other day. Very well done. And congratulations again to Hannah and her family. That's it. Alden with it. Alden Carrigan.
Just thanks to everybody on utilities and service. We had some snow, that's nice. Police force was out. It was trying to, to my knowledge, we had a good turnout with everybody helping. I know we've had some multi utility problems lately. You guys hop on, work in the cold. So just thank you from people in Woodbridge for doing a good job and trying to keep us warm, safe, and healthy and happy. Well, appreciate it.
Alden with Paulson.
Thanks.
Alden with Starr.
I had a resident reach out to me. They're concerned about the flags in the yard. When the utilities get done, are they going to pick up the flag so residents know that they're done or do they just leave the flags?
I don't personally know what the policy is on that, but I think it's regulated by Missouri One Call on how long you can leave them there, but I don't believe they come back and remove them.
I didn't know. They asked me. I have.
Yeah, they do not come back and remove them. I think there's a specific amount of time you have to leave them in there, though. I'd have to look that up to find out.
Okay, I didn't know. So I said, I'll ask.
I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
I have six kids. I'm over there, one of them, and one of them, and one of them, Mark.
Alden with it. A few people here are old enough to remember what the Odessa was in my office. Yeah, you are just old enough for us to use your proper second screeners.
Yeah. Yeah.
But nothing more than.
Very glad I don't remember any people that said. All right, very good. There was no director meeting today, so there will be no city administrator report. So you want any public comments tonight? None? No, all right. No business. Moving on, we do business. We'll start with the presentation from the Four Boy Tree Service.
Greetings.
Greetings. You are going to.
What can I ask?
Well, first of all, we are.
My new side with Four Boy Tree.
And you're about to unall the trees in Odessa around Powerline.
We're going to prune them.
Kind of prune.
Deliver that.
All right, I guess basically if you could just explain what the expectations are for the residents and for everybody, what they can expect to do this, go through this process.
We're going to bring some utility arborist crews in. These folks are all likely certified. We have a three-year apprenticeship program through the Department of Labor. Everybody goes through it. We have certified applicators that are, we put product out to control regrowth. If we make a mess, we clean the mess up. We cut the stumps close to the grounds we ingest. We like to remove trees that need removed. Or hazard. Let's see if we can mitigate the hazard before it, before it does a lot of damage to their stuff. Chip, question was asked of mulch. Not sure where that will be dumped at, but we'll put it wherever y'all say to put it, if we can get there. Whether, you know, you've got to have some flat ground and solid ground. Chips are heavy. It takes a lot to get them in and out, so. They make great mulch for gardens. They make great fill for ditches if you've got a low spot. And they won't be robed. Chip will not be robed in a wash. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So the arborist mulch will be placed in a, in someplace where the residents can come out and just pick up.
Wherever you tell us to put it, we'll put it there.
Pick up the prunes?
It's going to be fourteen, fifteen yards per load. And we're coming in with lift trucks and chippers. And you expect it to be about the size of your thumb. That's what you're expecting. Some mulch is not very conducive to mulching plants with. Walnut mulch is not very conducive. But I don't think we're going to have a lot of that. Most of it will be your maples and your hills, that kind of stuff. If I had to answer any questions, if you got them, guys.
So we can coordinate with the company to make sure that we have a designated place for the mulch and then we'll communicate out to the community that they're able to collect it.
Nice option.
Another, another point you might be, it is winter. Firewood, there's going to be a lot of firewood made here. So when we prune some stuff off, it's about the size of your arm. We tend to cut it into firewood. We can chip some of that, but it's non-productive. It's best to cut it in firewood layers. And if y'all want to coordinate picking up firewood out of certain people's yards that don't use it or want it, it does have some value. It's better to store. So we have press release stuff we can send you that we've done for many, we work, excuse me, we work for many other entities. This way, press releases, we can gladly send you to help communicate to everybody what, what we're going to do or not going to do.
That would be great.
We're not going to be back in the yard and making rats. We can reach fifty foot sideways to prune a tree. We're going to properly prune all trees, lateral pruning, per ISA standard, International Society of Arbutellists standards. And that's designed to, for the health of the tree and to prevent regrowth toward the power line. You can make a bad pruning cut, well, trim. And it'll grow toward the power line, toward your target, or you can make a proper pruning cut. So we're going to make proper ones.
And you'll start trimming with, sorry, pruning?
You said that bad word.
I said.
We're on some projects right now that we anticipate will wrap up in the next couple of weeks. We've got a lot of resources on a big herbicide project over on the western side of the state. And soon we'll get that wrapped up. We'll get some, get you freed up. We're going to come in with three to four crews. It's not going to take us long, you know, it's starting to make a lot of progress, but stuff that's not been pruned regularly or properly takes more time than stuff that has been pruned lately. Once, if we have a power line or a, or a target, and let's just use the example of a hundred dollars. If it takes a hundred dollars to prune it and it's not over or through the power line, it's a three X to wait on it. So if you wait for it to get over or through, it costs you three times as much. Time, energy, you're not making things trip faster friendly. So when you prune a limb that's ten foot long off, or you prune one that's six inches, it's longer to pick up six inch stuff than a ten foot piece. You can expect your trees to grow somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent per year, more. So if you have a tree that makes a thousand pounds of debris, next year it's going to make more.
Is the intent of the firewood to place it in the same place with the chips or to leave it where it was created?
Leave it lay as our normal.
Okay.
We'll do whatever he tells us to do with it.
They're going to have, they potentially could have piled firewood.
Yeah.
Sitting in their front yard until someone comes in.
And that would be discussed with the, with the landowner, with landowner discretion. There's no secrets here. We're going to be wearing orange. Everybody's going over here. They're highly visible. And so we're, we're going to communicate. We're going to talk to anybody that wants to visit with us about, in front of this, we don't want any misunderstandings. And the best way to not have misunderstanding? What were you going to read?
So I want to ask.
You have questions?
Do we know where the project will start?
Most men tell them.
Where it will start?
Where? Where?
Uh, it. Just.
Johnson Drive might be good.
That's a place where everybody wants to approach strong.
Have you heard that before?
We go from hero to zero at the speed of life.
Johnson Drive.
There's a nice storm or a bad storm and soon we get the power on. You know, they're dead by then. Move on, guys.
Any other questions for the board? Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you coming out. That was very helpful.
We look forward to seeing you guys. We'll see you in the, in the near, near future. You'll start seeing white trucks and buns on them and a lot of guys destined for it.
Okay.
We're not looking to be invisible here.
All right.
You guys have a blast eating. Merry Christmas and thank you guys for doing what you do. It's hard to do what you do sometimes. People kind of chew on you for no reason, but thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ty.
All right, now Chief Thompson with staff introductions.
Probably the show and tell today, so they're the, the show and tell today. I'm going to introduce both of them tonight. You guys have seen me do this, these types of introductions before. This truly is one of my favorite parts of my job is to show off and share some of the good things that our staff is doing. And I'm excited to introduce our two newest staff members. I'm going to start with Ben. Ben actually started with Odessa this past summer. You might have seen him at Puddle Jumpers. He was in our dunk tank and did some other cool things during the Puddle Jumper Fair. But he is our newest school resource officer, is assigned to the upper elementary school. Ben started August?
It's July.
July, okay. I didn't want to. July, and one of the neatest things that I've learned about Ben is he's a hobby parker, right? So he's got, he's got animals on farm and.
You do crops?
Yeah.
No, okay, just animals. But you have cattle and.
Cows and pigs.
Okay, so I really liked hearing that part of Ben's hobbies and upbringing. He's a Lawson boy, and we had some fun stories sharing about his time growing up at Lawson. Ben has a master's degree in criminal justice. You know, I have some staff that have bachelor's degrees or other certifications, but Ben, Ben has a master's degree. Double bachelor's degree, correct? One of the other cool things that I learned about Ben is that he's a professor at UCM. He uses his degree to also teach college kids. And I thought that that was just a really neat aspect of his career. Ben worked for sixteen years with the University of Central Missouri Police Department. Corporal, firearms instructor. As I said, he is an adjunct professor with UCM's Criminal Justice Department. He does carry some certifications. He's a crisis intervention team. All of my staff have CIT. Ben comes to us with CIT training. He's a firearms armor, which means he can take them apart, put them back together. He is a firearms and shooter, ballistic shield operator. He can do background investigations for police employees, new applicants, that is. Did I miss anything? Recently, we went to, he, he was certified as a basic school resource officer. We sent him through that program this summer to get him kickstarted into the school year. He is assigned at the upper elementary school, and I can tell you that he's doing a wonderful job in that. Not only the building, but with the school district. I'm going to, I hope it doesn't embarrass him at all. Cops love donuts, right? You guys know this. But Ben, Ben worked on a project to, with, with a private individual in town who helped us bring donuts to all the kids at the school. And, and the reason we did that, that, that I was really grateful for Ben to do that, but it helps build relationships and bond trust. And, you know, being a new police officer in the school district, I just thought that was a wonderful idea. And you just did that last week, didn't you? We did, yeah. So I'm super proud of what he's been able to do and looking forward to all the great things that he will continue to do for the city of Odessa. Now Alexis Parrot, with two Ts, right? She started working for us in September. Alexis has a bachelor's of science degree from criminal justice. One of the cool things that I learned about Alexis is she can fly airplanes, right? You can fly an airplane. And she hasn't promised me a ride in the airplane yet, but, you know, I think that that kind of is going to catapult her into some really cool things that her law enforcement career can bring. Before law enforcement, she got into the emergency medical service. And so as an EMT, she worked for some fire departments and ambulance districts, ambulance departments. She is a certified EMT. She is also a crisis intervention trained, but she's also peer support. And I've talked to you guys a little bit about officer well-being, public, public safety well-being. And she brings a lot of credentials to assist me in that program. Matter of fact, we just had a really good discussion tonight about peer support, to do officer wellness within our own department. And she'll be really, I'm, I'm happy of her passion in that. One of the other things that I'm excited about, the law enforcement side of our job, is Alexis is passionate in making sure that our roadways are safe. And I don't mean just, you know, stopping cars for expired tags or speeding, but impaired driving. You and I have had conversations, Carl, about impaired driving. And she's highly certified in not only DWI, alcohol, a ride, and some of these other programs for cannabis. You know, the legalization of marijuana does bring impaired drivers through that. And she's making a dent. She already has an dent just a short amount of time in Odessa. And many of you maybe haven't seen her, but she is kind of my, my back girl, right? So she, she works at night a lot of times, weekends evenings. But if you see her, make sure you wave, say hi to her. Is there a missing person? Unless you're certain. Going down my list here. Anyway, thank you to these two for, you know, their service, coming to work for us and their continued service in the city of Odessa. And would love if you see them at some point. We have the Shop With Cop program coming up this next weekend. It'll be great, greatly involved in that program. And so if you, we don't see them in the communities, say hi. They would love to hear what they've learned about you guys. Thank you.
Okay, why don't three of you stand together? Thank you.
Now we'll go on to the introduction and readings of bill number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six. No, not tonight. There was a director meeting, but it will be noted that the city administrator was called. All right. Introduction and readings of bill number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six approving the redemption of the city's outstanding sewerage system revenue bonds, state revolving fund, dash direct loan program, series two zero zero five, and authorizing certain actions in connection therewith. I'll take a motion to approve the first reading of the bill. Make a motion to approve first reading of bill number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six. Bob, regent. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Five zero, perception.
Is this what we talked about last week?
This is what we talked about last week, yes.
Yeah.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to update on it.
They just need to be put into ordinance.
They'll be in an ordinance, so they'll release it.
Yeah, okay. All right, then we'll go on to the second reading. Introduction and readings of bill number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six approving the rejection of the city's outstanding sewerage system revenue bonds, state revolving bond, dash direct loan program, series two thousand and five, and authorizing certain actions in connection therewith. Second, I will take a motion for the second reading as in words.
Take a motion to approve bill number twenty twenty-five dash as in ordinance, Bob, redemption of the sewer.
Got a motion and a second. Roll calls.
Alder member Whittit?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Carrigan?
Yep.
Plackey?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Motion carried, given ordinance number thirty-one sixty-five.
Now move on to proposed resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty and approve it of the donation of an easement and memorandum of understanding between the city of Odessa and the NSR Corps of Engineers regarding land owned by the city of Odessa. I would take a motion to approve. We will not vote on that. Take an actual vote between that discussion.
We do have members from Army Corps of Engineers here to, to speak during the discussion.
Okay, very good. So I take a motion to approve.
Take a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five, memorandum of understanding of each of the four engineers.
Need a second? Move out in a moment, give me a second. All right, we have a discussion.
You guys want to come up and introduce yourselves? So I have members from Army Corps of Engineers who have been working on the project with us. I did, like I mentioned before, I did meet with them to discuss the memorandum of understanding and we came to that agreement collectively. I did feel like it was probably best for you guys to hear from Army Corps of Engineers to better understand their program and their intent behind both the easement and the MOU.
I don't think it's all.
Okay.
It might die again, though.
John Skelton, I work at the Missouri River Project Office, for the Missouri River Navigation Project.
I, I'm Rachel Edgeman and I work for the Rural Estate Division. I work in the Rural Estate Division, here at the District Office.
Questions and questions?
Has anything changed in the MOU since we last talked about it?
No. No.
Alden with it. One of the things, I've got two real issues with it. One of the things that I noticed in the board action report, it says that the Corps will implement measures to divert water flow away from the city's existing wells, producing potential erosion and protecting water resources. That's not stated in any MOU.
If you like that in the MOU, I can put it in there. We ran the MOU through your guys' legals, so that wasn't something that was brought to our attention that they would like in there. We can do that.
That definitely would need to see.
Yeah.
The, the second issue that I have in your information on your website about the program, it explains under your frequently asked questions on easements. The Corps also has improvement, also has approval to obtain sloughing easements from willing private landowners for those lands generally within two hundred and fifty feet of the river. A sloughing easement allows the owner to maintain title to the land. However, the intent of this easement is to erode the land away. Is that the kind of easement that we're talking about?
No, sir, we're using efficient wildlife easement. There was, has nothing to do with sloughing.
With the B S P manages efficient wildlife struggle as well, part of the same program, isn't it?
It is. So the nineteen eighty-six, the Water Resource Development Act, which I will say is the order. So if I say word, this is what I'm referring to. Order nineteen eighty-six was the first BSMP. It was to redo the channel and alignment. And with that, we found out that there was about five hundred and twenty-two thousand acres of loss of habitat due to us realigning the, the river. So in nineteen ninety-six, we got a second order. And then in two thousand and seven, we had a third order. And those two were specifically to mitigate the loss of that habitat, both aquatic and terrestrial. So inland, on land and in the, the river. So that's what we're doing here. This is part of the Missouri River Recovery Program. It's to try to gain back some of that five hundred and twenty-two thousand acres of loss of habitat. So they might do something for like bank stabilization to stop the erosion of, of the river going in, like planting trees, vegetation, stuff of that nature. But this is so, this is purely efficient wildlife easement.
So it's not just fishing wildlife, though, is it?
There's birds.
About the NSP and fishing wildlife. So the Corps has the easement, don't they?
That is correct. So the BSMP is the Missouri River Bank Stabilization Navigation Project. And mitigation project is mitigating for the habitat loss. We also have, part of that would be the endangered species aspect of that project, which was MRP.
Right, so there's two parts to the program.
So we're looking at a mitig, this is a mitigation, I mean, it is overarching MRP and mitigation is a subset of that. So this easement that we're talking about would be consistent with a terrestrial as a, you know, the aquatic portion would be wealth, not a in-channel type of activity where we're actively designing or impacting the channels to slough off.
So it's to maintain the natural water flow? Part of this program?
This program, right, is, actually it's to enhance weapons, to enhance, enhance and develop weapons that aren't necessarily already on the landscape.
And it allows you to access the area for inspection, conservation, and flood control work.
That's correct.
Reading these things. And it prevents the landowners from altering the property, though we have no filling, yielding, or redirecting water, prohibits us from doing that, correct?
Without, I think, without permission or, or without contact, I shouldn't say permission, without contact and the.
Preserves wildlife habitat or wetlands.
Yes.
And it allows seasonal flooding, correct, without liability? That's a slough easement.
In my mind, a slough easement, I mean, I think that would be something in my mind, that we have the natural high bank in the Missouri River and that that is allowed to either purposely or just by no maintenance of the Missouri River structures, we would allow the river to come in and remove material to a river.
So by granting the slough easement?
Sir, if I may, this is not a sloughing easement. There is like standard of state language for a sloughing easement.
The definition of sloughy?
I under.
Not to argue with, we've got our attorney here and maybe he could help us with defining whether or not. here, and maybe he could help us with defining whether or not it is a sloughy, but my concern is, once we give away these rights to our property, we lose the, the ability of being compensated for an inverse con- condemnation. Because we've given you permission to do this with our property.
Correct, so whatever is in the fish and wildlife easement that I, I have sent through Sean, Ms. Davis and Mr. Dean and, um, the other attorney, Ms., I can't say her last name, so I'll just say Lindsay, um, and they, it's my understanding that they are aware of what the rights that we gain and what your guys' rights remain in that easement is.
So the question is whether or not we're willing to give away those rights.
Right, I guess what I was, um, so there is an actual sloughing easement with its own language. And then there's this easement that we have provided your guys' attorney, which is the fish and wildlife easement, so they're two different eas.
We got that.
You, I, I, I provided the, the fish and wildlife easement. So like, this one that is right, right here, um, I don't know if it's the same one that you're, that you're looking at, I'm assuming that it is. There is a, a separate easement that we hold in Missouri, or in the Corps of Engineers that is specifically for sloughing. This is not that easement.
This says no defoliation to any extent whatsoever of any trees, brush or other vegetation in its natural state by any cause, purpose, or means, or any trimming, felling, and cutting thereon, or removal therefrom of any trees, brush, or other vegetation in its natural state. No removal, shifting, or altering in any manner of gravel deposits as they are now or may hereafter exist on said lands. No export, exploration for, or removal or mining of any oil, gas, coal, or other minerals of any nature whatsoever. No construction of new structures or improvements or expansion of any existing structures or improvements on said land.
Without coordination with the Corps of Engineers.
Great.
Yeah, so we have a thing called a consent to easement, which is.
Are we assured of approval? When we need to do something?
Coordination is not proof of coordination, just means we talk to you about it and give you a chance to tell us no.
Right, so we have, um, I don't even know how many, um, easements, honestly, a lot. Eight, nine hundred at least, um, and I, I know this, I don't know if it probably doesn't make you feel any better, but I've never seen a consent to easement get denied for any reason. Um, we've been talking with our attorneys, your guys' attorneys. The expansion of your well is not gonna be an issue. We're not gonna leave the city of Odessa and the residents without the ability to get water now or in the future.
Can we get that in writing now? Say that in contract.
I mean, hopefully you see our, our.
I see, I.
You guys can, can say that now, but twenty years down the road, you'll still put your.
I can't put it in the, the easement language because the easement language is pre-approved language from, um, headquarters. It's standard regardless if you're the city of Odessa or Mr. and Mrs. Smith. Um, so that's why we kinda went to the, the MOU to try to like let you guys know that, like, we're not trying to stand in the way of your guys' water supply. Um, so.
And, and that really makes my point. Our only recourse is a legal one. If, if it changes and we're not allowed to do what we need to do, or our property becomes unusable to us, our only recourse is a legal one. And if we grant this easement, we give away that right.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, I.
I feel like it, it does address what they're saying in a way because it says, um, that the government, the government referring to Army Corps of Engineers will make reasonable efforts to ensure that its activities do not interfere with the city's continued operations, repair, and maintenance of existing wells or the development of future wells on the property. Such provided, uh, activities do not conflict with the government's mission or easement rights.
So when water crosses the two properties next and meets in the middle and crosses our property and makes our property unreachable, what's our recourse?
What do you mean by unreachable?
I'm sorry?
What do you mean by unreachable?
If we're unable to get to it, like, just like the flood, we couldn't reach our well?
Mm-hmm, we could by boat. We can reach them still.
So our activities that would be part of this easement. You know, so what we normally do, or the activities that we would do would be vegetation management. And would, we'd also have, uh, we also are trying to keep unauthorized use, like, unoperating, legal dumping, uh, legal shooting, you know, off, you know, shooting, target shooting, those type of activities. Um, and then also some limited amount of dirt work, right? So we would have, we have the ability to do that. Um, so we also currently share a, a boundary with the, the city of Odessa's government on the, on the website. Um, so when you say about water and cutting off the city of Odessa's property specifically, what physical or what, what manner do you, are you addressed, where you trying?
We would have to cross water to get to our well as far as our well become underwashed.
Correct, so I mean, we're not, we're not breaching any levers at this point.
I understand, that's not your intent.
Okay.
And it may be something that happens twenty, thirty, forty years down the road.
Are you worried that we're not gonna give you access to the land at, like, at all, like, I'm?
No, it's just, we're giving away our right to have legal recourse to recoup the value for our property. You're, you're effectively doing an inverse condemnation. You're taking our property away from us if something would happen that would prevent us access or damage our property.
Is there, is there ways that you think that the, uh, MOU can be improved upon to, to better accommodate?
You know, we're, because of the problem itself, we're between a rock and a place. Because, you know, you're talking about the government. Government's gonna do what the government's gonna do. So eventually, the Missouri River is gonna flood again. And you've got property on both sides of it that we don't know if, if the government is going to maintain that property forever. Okay, there's a levy that, that I guess is behind our property, we're between the levy and the, the river itself. Um, but we don't know if the government's gonna always keep that land dry. And so we don't know what's gonna happen to our wells. So do we just hope for the best and go with it? Do we develop a second source for our water so that we're protected? You know, do we give our rights to recoup some kind of money in the future if something would happen? You know, I, personally, I'm not willing to give away that right to recover some money that we've invested in that property.
Mm-hmm.
It may flood and that land may, may soak away in a year. It may be a hundred years, it may never soak away.
Mm-hmm.
We don't know.
Well, the contract specifically says we can't do any flood mitigation as soon as we sign this over. So even if we wanted to try to put our own levy or anything about it to protect it, we can't.
Well, then they could go in now and raise the road and build a rain and run well. They could do that for us, but twenty years down the road, government. The boards change, leadership changes.
And Barry mentioned a lot of them, talking about, they still have things to levy that they said they fixed years ago. So.
So I think we're, we're being asked to give up a lot.
Pretty risky. Although we, I think most of us would agree with what the intent of your program is.
Yeah, I mean.
It's very risky for us to go to Odessa to give away our water rights with so much at stake.
Right, we don't, we. That's not our intent, is to take away your water rights. We just wanna restore the land, make some, some habitat, wetland, otherwise plant vegetation, dump a bunch of federal funds into it.
We have your country state.
It wouldn't. Right, like, so we wouldn't like just abandon the land, like, we're investing federal dollars in, into this program to fix kind of, you know, maybe what we inadvertently broke long before I was even, you know, born. So.
If you could dig us a pipeline to a new well, we'd be fat and happy.
I don't know if we can get federal dollars for that, um, maybe under section fourteen, uh, just getting kind of. I, I just. We have good intentions and I understand that I'm not gonna be here in thirty years, I'll be around for at least the next fifteen, 'cause that's when I can fire. I don't plan on going anywhere until then, so I can almost guarantee at least the next fifteen years, you know, but outside of, outside of that, the only thing I can tell you is I've never seen a consent to easement denied. I've been with the Corps for eight years. Um, I've written many, many consent to easements for fences, cohorts, um, intake structures, stuff like that, sidewalks, handrails, um, as long as it's not going to be we're gonna come in and bulldoze, you know, every single vegetation tree that you have planted, it's not, it would not be denied. I can't see any reason why it would be, and I know the worst of these probably not doing much good right now. But.
I think, I think I agree with what you're saying where the intent was one hundred percent there, you know, they approached us with, um, a need on, on their end, their, their need to or want to purchase our property. We kind of, you know, created a boundary there by going the easement route where their intent is to restore the land and to conserve the, the, the land. And from our perspective, there's, there's little harm in preservation of that land when it's, it's a high flood area that has such a, um, important asset of ours on it. So the intent was there to create a relationship between city of Odessa and the Army Corps of Engineers to create a program that was both mutually beneficial to us both. Um, I understand your legal concerns and I think that there's, that, I don't think that there's, um, um, a need to completely scrap this opportunity, but I think that there's an opportunity to, to maybe strengthen the, the legal, um, language that's in here to maybe protect the city a little bit further. I'm willing to make that effort and work with you to, to get your concerns on paper and get those to Lindsay and Joe. Or not, but, and it's your decision, if that's an avenue that you want me to take it, if, if not, then that's fine too. Um, but I think that there's an opportunity to, to, uh, take this a, another step further. And I, I do wanna clarify too, I know this is, this is the second time this has been brought to you, so a third time being brought to you would be extensive, but my understanding previously was that, um, you were wanting a little bit more background from me, so I didn't make any changes necessarily to the MOU or even, um, reach out to, to seek any changes, so we haven't done that step. So I'm, I'm open to doing that, that's, if that's what the board wishes. Um, we can even, even take a stab at it and then, you know, work with the mayor to determine if we feel like that was sufficient and it needs to be brought back to the board, or we can not bring it back to the board.
Legal counsel? Does an MOU ever trump a contract?
Um, not necessarily, I mean, they're, they're, it's kinda like the second cousin to a contract, if you will. Um, so, um, but, I mean, the easement is, is yet another, uh, legal instrument, right? Um, and so, anyway, I was kind of conversing, uh, with Ms. Davis, I, I mean, I think, I will tell you, you know, I haven't been directly involved in this, I was covering tonight because, uh, one of our attorneys couldn't be here. And so I wanted to make sure that you had somebody here. I'm not as familiar with this as I would, you know, would hope to be on it, but I do see, it, it appears to me based on the, the background that I've heard, what I've talked with Ms. Davis about, that you are making progress if this is an option, you know, to just have that opportunity to address some of the concerns that Alderman Witzit brought up this evening and that you were kind of seconding and, and see if we can still come up with some language that would help, uh, you know, that, you know, you guys have concerns, they have an interest. Let's see if there's a, a, a way that we can make those work, but in a, in a way that you're comfortable with it going forward and, you know, we, you know, we've dealt with, you know, like MoDOT or, you know, like whatever, sometimes they just say headquarters said this is the contract and that's it and, and if we can't strike a deal, we can't strike a deal, but if there's a way to, you know, to get it done, then, you know, we'd give you that opportunity if you're interested, right? I mean, I guess that's really what Ms. Davis was saying was, you know, if you, if you're not interested, there's no sense spending additional resources on it, or we're, we, we think we can help you get closer.
So let me just grab it, so in your opinion, a memorandum of, of, an MOU would not trump contract if they didn't change the contract if we had to go to court?
No, because, I, I mean, again, I, I don't know if contract's the right word, but, you know, a contract, you look to the four corners of the contract, if there, if you have a contract and there are documents outside of it, you have to find a way to draw those in, I'm not seeing that connect on, on this. So, you know, it is, I think the MOU is designed to outline, you know, on, on, you know, the four corners of the paper, what it is that, that the parties were trying to achieve. Um, but in the end, if the words don't line up or they don't, they're not, they don't have a strong connection, then, you know, it'll, you're gonna have the fight now, or you're gonna have the fight in court, but you're still gonna have a fight, so.
Does the city have the amendment right to adjust compensation?
Um, that is an interesting question, I've been doing this for twenty-three years, I have never had to answer that question before, I don't know. You can't, so someone cannot take the, a private party cannot take the city's property. I don't know exactly how that would work between the federal government and the city itself. Each of, you know, the city or the state or the federal government can take obviously from a private party. I'm not, I, I just don't know the answer to the question with respect to whether they can take from each other.
That would be one thing I'd like to know, if we look at it again, is if the granting the easement would take away any right for, uh, that we would have to sue for inverse condemnation?
Yep, I actually wrote that right in my notes here as you were talking as far as all the things to address, so, uh, um, it'll be, that, that's, you know, I, I wrote the question down, I just don't have the answer to it, so.
The other, other thing would be, uh, there was the radius uh, that Mr. Lamb had talked about that he didn't ask about before, there was no interest in protecting that radius around the well. That would be something to negotiate, if we're willing to, to take another look at.
Yes, sir, we, we are completely amenable to that, I think when we were talking of this MOU through to begin with, um, nobody could give us really like exactly where you guys might expand to, I think the most I got was like four hundred feet north of the current well. Um, we would definitely take that into consideration and again.
Are, are you saying protection of the existing wells or an addition of a future?
Yeah.
And also management of, of the terrestrial or the vegetation up to a distance of at least three hundred.
Now, now that, now that you ask, I think he was talking about an addition in, like, three hundred feet or current what?
So I think.
Have to talk to him to clarify.
Your current wells might be about three hundred and fifty feet apart, so I went with three hundred, I kinda measured out three hundred. Just see what that looks like.
Well, if we could do those things, I'd be willing to look at it again.
When you say inverse condemnation, you're saying that we would do actions that would be harmful?
No, no, inverse condemnation is something where you could do and act on your own property that would cause us to lose value in our property. Okay, you wouldn't have to do anything directly. Okay, you wouldn't have to do anything directly on ours.
Correct.
But you could do something on your own property, like allow water to flow through your properties. It ends up running on ours. So you therefore devalued ours or caused us to not be able to use ours. Uh, our soil will be washed away where we still have the land, but unfortunately it's all, all underwater.
Yeah, and I believe when we met in, in the law offices down in Lee Summit, John was talking about how we were gonna try to plant vegetation and maybe move some dirt around so that we would actually try to reduce the flooding near your guys' wells. Um, we're not gonna strip the land and just let you guys flood purposely, like, you know, break down the levee. We'll make, we'll do our best to provide as much protection to you guys as well with the measures that.
At this point, we can't.
Measure.
But at this point, we can't promise you, yeah, we're gonna build a levee around existing infrastructure. Um, do we have intent, you know, some kind of idea that we wanna do some dirt work to provide for maybe some wetland creation that way? So that would be a burn, right? So we're moving dirt. I mean, we would move dirt. I mean, if we're gonna move dirt, we would do it. We probably let them know, hey, we're gonna be moving dirt. Do you have any concerns, questions? Uh, we also don't want our property washing into the river either. We have enough of government, uh, everybody has enough, there's enough property, uh, eroding to the Missouri River enough as we, you know, right now. So our intent is not to continue, was to try to do something to mitigate that on our property.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it very much. Well, we've got a motion and second, Joe. We're not in charge of territory.
Wanting to postpone to another, we just take another vote. So we should make the motion and then we get a second and we can postpone it to the next, next meeting or.
About having to take a vote even though we've got a second.
It, yeah, this would be a secondary motion on the existing motion based on your discussion.
Whatever you choose.
We don't have to set a date.
All right, so you could essentially just do a, a motion to postpone uh, indefinitely to allow staff and the uh, uh the United States government to uh, further address the concerns. So essentially it's a motion to postpone indefinitely.
I'm what chose.
I make, I make a motion that we postpone the topic. Um, until staff and the Army Corps of Engineers consult and come together with some, some more information.
All right, got a motion. That's second making?
Sure.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor. Five zero.
Perfect.
That motion passes. All right, next up is a motion of approval. Approval to authorize the city administrator to establish a part-time public information coordinator position. We're gonna start with discussion.
I can add context if you'd like.
Yes, please do.
Sure.
Okay, so just to give a little bit of context to why and how this position came to be. Um, the start of it would be the uh, strategic plan. One of the items in the strategic plan was to add a public information and communications intern to help us uh, facilitate the goals of that set that priority area of the strategic plan. So some of those items being that um, we're working to build trust, we're working to increase our social media presence and things like that. So this position would one hundred percent be responsible for um, taking on some of the social media presence and kind of helping build our online platform brand, including that on the social media pages or on the website, whatever that may be. Um, so there's a couple of different things. As of right now, the urgent topics and urgent reason for, you know, topics of communication that we have that the physician could assist with would be the uh, tax initiatives and the sidewalk project. So we know that there's going to be an increase in um, communication efforts and communication means once the sidewalk project starts to kick off, it'll be as simple as, you know, the street is closed or the sidewalk is closed or a portion of the sidewalk is closed or the door piece, whatever area is closed or open or whatever it may be. So there will be a lot of communication efforts needed for that. Those are some of our immediate communication needs that we have between the, really for the next six to nine months. Um, on top of that though, and in regards to the strategic plan and some of the efforts that we're trying to achieve, there's a lot more communication needs that we have within the strategic plan. Um, one of those being the community development priority or uh, priority area of focus. So uh, we know that we need to increase our communications, whether that be through our website, through the processes, uh, better understanding the processes for those that are the end user of the community development department. So if we have experienced uh, some change in that area, we have a new employee who's doing a great job. Uh, but overall, we're trying to see how can we best achieve our end goal, which is creating a clear and concise uh, process that can be communicated to those developers. Right now, one of our biggest problems in that department is that there's not enough information for the applicants when they start the process. So how can we make that more readily available, uh, whether that's on the website, tangible, in their hands, whatever it may be, uh, this person could work with myself or with Jenny to accomplish some of those goals that are very lofty goals. Um, another area of uh, operations that's recently taken a shift in how we've been doing things is economic development. So we've actually had more economic development opportunities in the past three to four months than I've seen in my time in this position. Uh, but with that comes an urgency of trying to get information, communication information, not only, you know, for our internal residents, but out to those businesses that are interested in coming to us. We've seen it, we've practiced it, we've done it a few times now where we have, say, five days to get an entire communications platform or marketing platform to these businesses that could be interested in moving to Odessa. Uh, and that's a, it's, it's, it's a lot of work. Uh, the ability to kind of build our repertoire of marketing material, um, even as little as having pictures of Odessa from, you know, highlights of things that are attractions, what make Odessa great, having that in a, in a format that is able to be put into marketing materials to really sell our. Uh, those are all things that a communication physician could uh, very much so assist with. I do have in the, in the uh, board action report, my intent behind this would be to fully budget the position by uh, our, by the time we're working on the twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight budget. So that would be the last few months, three and a half months of this fiscal year. And then, uh, uh, the next fiscal year, we would want to use reserves for that timeframe to give us some time, one, to be able to get that into the budget. It's not something that operationally we have the funds for. But when you look at our fund balance, that's somewhat of a different story. Uh, the, the fund estimates that I have for the fiscal year that was just audited were estimated numbers, but I show eighty-six percent fund balance with our goal being that uh, twenty thousand dollars does not produce that number um, hardly at all if, uh, even one percent. So um, using fund balance for one-time expenses is ideal. Using fund balances for uh, salaries is uh, somewhat of a no-no. This, in this scenario, I'm treating this as a one-time expense to give us time to incorporate it into our, into our operating budget. Not something that I feel comfortable with doing in the next month or two for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven budget. I'm confident in that. Any questions?
Questions, I'll move it. So if we hired this person today and we go through our budget process and we combine that position with another position that this person we hired today isn't qualified for, did we just let them go?
Uh, I am treating it as a temporary position. I would, I wouldn't want to do that, but if, if the budget brought us to that decision, that would be the decision. It's a temporary position at this time.
This person that you would hire today would need to understand that.
It is temporary based on.
We've got, had the budget discussion, things may change.
Correct. Um, we can easily say, we can say on the job posting that it's a temporary position based on funding available.
You've not included on the action report how much it would be for the current fiscal year?
Um, I don't have those calculations. I just looked at it on an annual basis since then. We have about a quarter of the year left, so it would be about five thousand.
Oh, thank you.
Personally, I love this idea. I love it. There needs to be a liaison between the city and people like my husband, I'll use him as an example, who doesn't, we don't take the paper. He is not, he's not on Facebook. He tried to get on the city website and he got frustrated.
I hear that a lot.
So he, so he gave up. So he doesn't have any idea of what's going on in the city except for what I tell him. And then when he says he needs to talk to his alderman, I tell him to go talk to Carl. But I, I love this idea. And I, and twenty thousand dollars to me, that, that is like a drop in a bucket. You know, I, I think it would be well worth the expense. I think that if we had a liaison that could speak to the people, you know, and give them, give them these, I tell them, all right, like you said, this sidewalk's gonna be closed, this part of the road's gonna be closed, the tree trimmers are coming. You know, I, I, I just think this is a great idea. I, that's just me.
I, the others, the other side of it too is us more in social media comment, but us telling our story. We talk about it a lot in brotherly that we have to tell our story or no one knows what we're, what we're doing and why we're here. And I think we have the same problem with City of Odessa where just, just because of the workload that we have overall, the communication that does get put out is, tends to be negative. So not only do we need to increase our participation and to build our brand and things like that, but we also need to pay attention to how we're telling our story, how we, you know, talk about each of our employees and the work that they do and highlight some of those positives as opposed to just we have a power outage or water main break or just the necessities that have to go out. We need to turn it on its head and tell our story as well.
Yeah, I, I just I, I am for this completely.
Carl.
So, um, I think with the, with it presented as a temporary position, it would give time to to kind of test it out first, say, to see, is this gonna benefit, how is it gonna benefit us? Um, you know, is it gonna bring potentially more business? I, I think it's a good, a good way to test it out and stuff. Non-going budget, full-time position benefits and all that, because it says ten to fifteen hours a week. And not that. I, I, I.
Carl.
I agree with both of you. I think it's a great thing. I think it's needed. I think it is a, a small investment. But I have two concerns. One, it is ten fifteen hours a day. They've five thousand dollars the next couple of months. This is a heavy lift of someone who needs to be qualified. This is not a high schooler. This is not someone that you're gonna pay minimum wage to. So if we wanna get our money's worth out, twenty thousand dollars is enough. So if we're gonna throw twenty thousand dollars at somebody, we're not gonna get what we want. The experiment is gonna fail. And so on the second thing, we, I'm concerned that and so I asked Troy a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of meetings ago, what's holding us back with our electrical grid of changing over to the new substation and this money? But yet we have two and a half million dollars that belong from ourselves sidewalks. We have fifty thousand dollars for this, fifty thousand dollars for that, twenty thousand dollars for this. And you say we're eighty-six percent over on our reserves or eighty, eighty-six percent fund balance. We have money for six of these other things, but we don't wanna invest that money on something like that that could potentially lower utilities or get a better power grid that we've argued we need.
Arguably, a new substation would be four to five million dollars, which we do not.
But he said we don't need a new substation. We just need to transfer over to.
The what?
And I was told we had the parks. We just need the time to do it. Uh, we have to, to move over to the twelve forty or whatever?
That, that is the conversion.
Sorry, the converter, yeah.
We budgeted two fifty for that this fiscal year.
Yeah. But it's not done, right?
Correct.
And two fifty wasn't enough?
Two fifty is enough for that and we were waiting to go out for bid for that until we had engineers. So we made sure that we didn't have to duplicate any work and we had someone to kind of cross records what we were planning to do.
Well, the year's almost over.
We will not make it.
Yes, please. Yes, damn. So that's the concern I have. It's always, we're spending money on things that are worthwhile and I agree. I think this is a great thing that we need to do.
I under, I understand your concerns. I will say, um, we, we budgeted to use reserves and I think that it's, it's makes sense to have the reserves that we have right now with general fund because we have some of these un, unknowns that are coming down the pipeline, being in the sidewalk project. So yes, we allocated from other areas, but this sidewalk project is a liability to us at this time, quite frankly. It's a liability. Uh, the costs continue to increase. We keep kind of running circles. And that's a big question mark that we need to know that we have the funds available for. But also the funds that we need versus the funds that this, this twenty thousand dollar investment will get us are, are very different. Apples and oranges, in my opinion. The twenty thousand dollars for this investment helps us achieve a lot of the other investments that aren't included in the strategic plan. Where uh, having the reserves for something like the sidewalk project is, is something that the way I perceive it is that we don't have a choice. We are too far into this. We have to complete it and we have to have money to complete it. So having an eighty-six percent fund balance when we have a project like that is physically responsible. And twenty thousand, it's a minimal best.
I think if you wanna I agree with you and I disagree with you. If you wanna look at the negative on everything, that's always what you're gonna see. This is a, this is something that we, we've needed for a long time. Uh, is the mon, is the amount of money that they're, they're gonna pay them enough to get whatever? I work with people who make six figures and they ain't worth twenty thousand dollars. This, this is something that's very much needed because we, no matter what we do, we always get mad publicity. We, we need someone who, who can be a PR positive person.
Do you think the salary also aligns with our current salary schedule and with the um, hourly rates that are being, currently being paid for um, similar grade levels within city hall and other departments?
Well, listen, to clarify for myself and, and I think to address some of your concerns, Carl, we're not making a twenty thousand dollar decision. If we agree to this, we're only making a five thousand dollar decision to, for the rest of it will be made in the budget.
I don't. No, I'm proposing to use reserves for the next fiscal year as well.
I, I understand. What I asked you a question a while ago, what if the budget combines it with another position? And we may decide in the budget process that, no, we don't have the money to do that. You know, the board's free to change its mind when we put the budget together and, and okay. So the only decision we're really making tonight is to allow you to hire this person, tell them that, hey, it's a temporary job. I'm gonna try to keep you till the next year. But that decision really isn't made until the budget's done. It'd be wholly inappropriate for this board to sit here and make the budget decision by uh, just a motion to agree to this, to what you want as opposed to the budget resolution. I don't know that we, the legal make a budget decision. I don't know that we, the legal make a budget decision for the next year with this kind of method.
What's being proposed though is not to use operational dollars, it's to use reserve dollars, which is outside of the budget that would be approved in April.
Every dollar spent is a budget type, whether it comes from your reserve or something else, it's budget. The budget spends your reserve plus your actual.
I understand.
Budget.
I do not, I do not feel confident in the ability to get this within the operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year.
I'm sorry, you don't feel confident or what?
To be able to fit the twenty thousand into the next year's operating budget. I don't think it's possible.
Sure, you wanted to commit twenty thousand dollars plus five thousand dollars out of this year's reserves? And say you wanna spend it next year?
No, I would like to do five thousand from this fiscal year and twenty thousand from the next fiscal year.
Okay, and twenty thousand for next year will be spent out of next year's budget. Which we will approve prior to April first, twenty twenty-six.
Sure.
And that's a decision that the Board of Alderman agreed by resolution in the spring. We can't make that decision to approve the budget tonight.
I mean, I can put in the budget that we're going, the use of, of reserve dollars, I can do it that way, but I cannot get it in the operational budget. Is my problem.
You can put it in the budget as a request, but what I'm saying, the board can't approve a budget expenditure for next year tonight.
Are, are they able to approve reserve dollars for the next fiscal year?
It would be similar to like a long-term contract where you say, you know, we're gonna enter into a contract for five years, we're gonna pay a hundred thousand dollars a year. You know, what Alderman Witsit is saying essentially is, even if we say yes tonight, when the budget comes up, if they decide differently. It, you know, before April first, then that's their prerogative to decide differently, so. And if you, if you do a five-year contract for a hundred thousand dollar payments and you do it the first year and you say that was a terrible idea, you don't appropriate and. And you just don't spend the money then.
That's, that is true.
Yeah, so that, that's why I said the best we can do is tell this person, yeah, we'll hire you from that, change the per.
But we would still be approving the use of reserve dollars for the next fiscal year, just like a contract.
But we wouldn't have a contract.
He's like hypothetically, like a contract.
I, I guess I don't follow the distinction of that you don't count reserve dollars and, I mean, the bud, the budget is. Whatever you had from the prior year, whatever, you know, whatever you're gonna spend in the, in the coming year. Or what, wherever you think is gonna come in, in the coming year is what you have to spend at that point, so. You still, when you start the new budget year, it starts then, not, not now, so.
Okay.
Everybody got some questions to answer?
I mean, maybe if I could finish one thing, one thought on that is, is, you know, again. If the board tonight decides that they would like this position and you would like to fund it as Ms. Davis has suggested. You can do that, you can go forward and then you'll have, you'll still have your decision to make in April. But if it doesn't get funded, then at that point in time, we'll have to tell, if you hire that person, we'll have to tell them. Sorry, your, your position didn't get funded and.
Right.
We'll send you out. Makes it, makes it hard to recruit people, but yeah.
Okay. Any que, more question for Charlotte? I would take a motion to suspend the motion of a table for the part-time public information board. Make motion to give Charlotte authorization to hire the, um, part-time public information board. Yes, got a motion and a second. Motion to approve goes forward. All right, now, we have the mobile food vendor sum, summary, uh. And we do have, we have Terrica here and Ty here.
Yeah.
Oh, there you are. So if you have any questions for them, um, they can come forward and answer any questions you want. So go ahead, Bruce. Um, I included a couple of other in the agenda for you to kind of, uh. Uh, point out the discussion or go over the discussion we held. There's just a few items in the ordinance that we couldn't come to, uh, consensus is what we needed to do. Um, I went through the ordinance and identified those items in brackets for you. Um, and if we can just jump in and go down to the first item, license required. It was discussed that the city and its business license application should require liability insurance. With the city as an additional named insured in a manner similar to the city of Oak Grove for all business applicants. Food trucks and brick and mortar. Oak Grove does this, I know. Uh, Odessa does not require the city as an additional insured, do you think?
We do not. No, we do require a food establishment permit from the county, but I would also like to, um.
I think even for brick and mortar, we don't require.
For brick and mortar?
No.
Additional name, I'm sure.
No.
What kind of implications if we were to do that? What would that do? What, what would that?
They would just supply us with a certificate of liability insurance, which a lot, a lot of the businesses already do that. They already give it to me. Um, if they have five or more employees, then they add the workman's comp with that certificate of liability. It's all on one sheet.
What would that do for self-proprietory or, you know, small people that don't make a bunch of money well? That don't technically have insurance? For some of the stuff that.
It would be an added cost.
Yeah.
Cost wise, it used to not cost very much to add an additional named insurance, you know, ten bucks.
But if you don't have insurance at all, that will.
They'd have to, have to get some kind of liability insurance.
Yes.
I would hope that a brick and mortar would have some kind of liability insurance policy.
I'm just thinking about the people who aren't necessarily part of this discussion that are gonna get affected if we go with something like that. That now have to do and cost more money. To sell the trinkets or whatever, instead of just getting a business license, now they have insurance, a lot of all of it. Isn't justified to what they're doing.
I can't imagine.
I guess I'm done. I don't have a search that's on.
What would be the advantage to the city to have be na, an additional named insured?
I don't think there's any advantage at all, Alderman Witsit. You know, cities enjoy sovereign immunity in Missouri. And the exceptions to sovereign immunity are when you buy insurance and you create liability. That is then, the hole is filled by, by the insurance coverage. In these circumstances, if I understand correctly, we're talking about a food truck and a comparison of that to a brick and mortar, I don't. To me, it doesn't make, the city wouldn't be liable for a trip and fall at a brick and mortar. Or someone, you know, necessarily, you know, even a trip and fall at a food truck. Uh, I, I'm not certain the context as far as whether these would be parked on public property or if they would be on private property. Um, you know, but it wouldn't be any different than the, the liability you'd have for someone just walking down the street anyway, right? So, um, I don't know that the, I, I, you know.
No real advantage?
Yeah, it's not, I don't think so. And if it's, it's not a known dangerous condition, then that's not something we're gonna liability for anyway, so.
It would, I see where it would make sense if the food truck were to be parked on or at railroad park or any other city property. But overall, this ordinance is for food trucks in Odessa city limits and not just on city property. So we'd have to be careful to not put a blanket statement out, so it would require it for all, all food trucks in Odessa.
Wouldn't you be okay though?
I don't know. It would be difficult.
Okay, I missed what you just said. So no liability insurance, okay?
Section twelve seventy-eight A. Question was asked, where in the city food trucks could operate if they were limited to railroad park? As stated in the ordinance above. And below, they can operate in other places where the ordinance allows. Consensus was the ordinance is up there. Um, I think the ordinance says they can park in any city right of way where they, basically they're out of the way of the traffic. So we had consensus there, no reason for any change from our discussion. Then we go back to. Uh, number of vehicles allowed. Discussion was had on the simple reservation system and whether the four vendor limit was a problem. It was acknowledged that it was not really a problem, but the reservation system is the city of method of tracking. Who is in the city to ensure collection of sales tax revenue. A simple sign-in list would accomplish that task. Board discussions to establish a call-in, check-in system for mobile vendors who need it. Further discussion was held regarding fee for use of railroad park. Well, let's talk about the reservation system first.
How would that work?
It'd be kind of cumbersome. Is this a thing like just go to city halls, I had, I want to sign up sheet? Go to city hall, but what if city halls cook? To me, that kind of relegates it to the police station. They could call the police station and say, hey, I'm here. Police station could keep a list.
This is related to how many can be at railroad park at once? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, some kind of check-in system just to know that they're there, not necessarily to limit the number.
Oh, I see.
But you also stayed in there, it's so that the city can follow them, make sure they're paying their sales tax.
Right.
Which, did you do that for any other business in the city?
Well, we can at the end of the, end of the year or periodically contact the state and get a list of who's paid sales tax, right Kathy?
Yes.
I don't believe.
Yes. Yes, we do get receipts.
I know that Blue Springs in years past, I don't know if they currently do. But in years past, if you go to their Fall Fun Fest and you don't pay sales tax, they will write you a letter and say, hey.
So they're very popular. Are we willing to do that for all businesses? Cause I don't think it's fair to single out food trucks.
No, that would be something that, that definitely should be.
Everybody at puddle tempers, every pop-up event, second Saturday on second. Well, that's everybody that sells anything period. We'd have to verify it for everybody, not just food trucks.
That has a business license within the.
Yeah, and if they don't have a business license, are they legally allowed to even sell pop-up?
We have over three hundred business licenses in town currently, so it'd be very difficult.
I don't know if we want to go down that road.
It covers them, but you also have lost revenue.
Yeah, it might generate revenue, correct. It might generate revenue, but it is a return on investment for the labor invested in it, worth it. I don't know, we wouldn't know unless we did it and saw what it was.
Does this fall under the signup sheet reservation? Well, in town where you'd know who, who is, as you say, just to pop up somebody coming in. If you don't have permission, if you've not registered. That gives us a list of who's here, who's here.
But that would also potentially limit the people who are willing to come to pop-up events that don't have business licenses. But now know that if a vendor, for example, at second Saturday on second, doesn't have a business license in Odessa. Knows that Odessa's gonna say, what did you sell? Did you pay your sales tax for all the sales that you did at that event? Or at any other pop-up event anywhere else? Now, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do that, but that, that enters that risk that everybody has to be liable for, not just food trucks. Now, it would increase revenue if those people decide to get a business license. It does. It would increase revenue if you caught them not paying and they pay sales tax and then you, they end up having to pay, figure out, it does increase revenue. Potential. But what costs the city staff to follow up on all those and for code enforcement to go and make sure every pop-up event, everybody has a business license? And then to sign up everybody at every pop-up event to make sure you know who you're following up on for everybody? To make sure they're paying. Are we interested in doing that?
So my question to be, um, so you do all of this and you find out they haven't paid their sales tax. What's the city's recourse and how much time does that take then? How many resources does that have?
I don't know.
I mean, I know, that's just a question.
I don't know.
I think your notification would be to state that, hey, we've got this person, we, we know they were here on this day, this day, this day. Um, they need to be audited. Whether or not the state would audit them is another step, and that would be their prerogative.
If, if you, if I could just give some input, just on some experience I have is that, you know, it. Whether they're a food truck or whether they're a brick and mortar. I mean, there's still a risk that someone doesn't pay, collect their sales tax and remit it, right? I mean, I, you know, used to represent a CID. Community Improvement District that imposed a sales tax. And so we went around to kind of just see, and it was like, you know, like the barber shop, for example. You know, it's a service, you're cutting hair, but they also sell, you know, beard wax and, you know, like whatever. Combs, they're not collecting the sales tax on that. So, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's a similar enforcement issue that you deal with. With every ordinance that you write, right? I mean, you know, the, the, the police department is not. You know, they have to have probable cause, they can't, you know, like they're, they're monitoring what's going on, but you know, you can't stop everybody. You can't know exactly whether someone is, is violating the law or not violating the law or whatever. But if you've got an ordinance, you know, I, I assume that there's a, a display requirement that if they've got their. City, you know, license, that that's at least displayed, you know, someplace where a customer can see it or someone wanna walk up, you know. I don't know how many, you know, sites we're talking about, I'm guessing it's not fifty food trucks. You know, so, I mean, if you've got a pop-up event, you've got five food trucks there, it takes you twenty minutes to. To check them all, if you wanted to do that, you know, you could certainly spot check it so that they know, hey, Odessa's on it. They're gonna send a secret shopper out and they're gonna buy something. And if they don't see that sales tax remittance on your receipt, that gets turned in. And it's the same way, you know, again, that, you know, we enforce other ordinances, you know, if you actually see something, you know, as a code enforcement officer or where the case may be. Or it might be complaint driven. If a, you know, if there's a competitor out there who, you know, didn't get their first come, first served slot. And they don't think the person's collecting taxes, well, they can go buy a Coney dog and, and, and see whether they're getting charged tax or not. And then that might cut out some competition, but, you know, complaint driven is, is a lot of how our municipal ordinances get enforced. You know, in, in many cases anyway, so. I, I think it's there. I mean, I think it, it, it kind of, kind of self-enforces and, you know, people, people want the opportunity to sell in your community. So they'll follow your rules. And if they don't, you'll toss them.
Hire Terrica, either you or three of you though?
So as far as having a signup process and stuff like that. To keep track of any sales tax that you need to pay or anything like that, you're right, you guys are all correct and saying they're. Making more additional steps to. Come to a resolution that's probably not going to get resolved. Because it's trying to set, you have to have someone to come audit somebody. Um, as far as if, if this, if a food truck's paying their sales tax, sometimes they'll hike their prices up. And it's leaving a flat rate. And they pay from that to, in my business, this is that years, make things one more top paid than they need to be.
Well, portions of it.
The way the ordinance is now with first come, first served, I still think it should stay that way. Four trucks in that area is kind of much anyways, cause you're gonna actually violate fire code. Most likely, and most likely they're very small units. Um, because food trucks need to have tech being between them, between each other.
Um, because food trucks need to have tech being between them, between each other. So. There's no real need for what's already there to be changed. If you guys have a sign up. Reservation thing, so you guys could keep track of that. Other cities usually when we do set up them. To try and keep track of that, they'll bring us a tax forms, uh, when they go around, they do. Their inspections. Um, kind of just to help know that like where, what that, that we're aware that they keep track of that stuff. For my business, it's never been concerned, I still live in the trash, cause we already have all the stuff, that's the whole thing here. So. It really just depends on. What you guys already said, how far do we want to pay somebody to go in? And keep accountability for all this stuff. So. That's my input on it, I just leave it because.
Good.
Guys, make more responsible and yourselves, you're probably not making the results you want out of. So.
I was just gonna add, we do. Oh, we do, um. We do collect the Missouri sales tax ID and then we also have the, um.
No sales tax due letter.
No sales tax due, so they have to prove that they've paid their back taxes, which I know is different than reporting, but. From, from our perspective, that's all that we can do is make sure that they're registered with the state and have been. Paying what they, they owe historically to monitor that.
And then the state verifies it and gives us a report periodically.
Do we have any that would just come into town and. Park for a day and just.
They may, they may, if I see them and they don't have a business license, I'll approach them and ask them to get one and then they typically will do that, so.
Just very many?
No.
There's also, we've not had any conflicts with. Um, the capacity limit at railroad park either.
I expressed to people, they do call and I expressed to them that it's first come, first served, so. Um, you know, and make sure that they're not impeding traffic or, you know, parking. Outside on the roads, you know, where the people are walking through the road to get to the, the food truck, so. Food establishment permit, fire extinguishers, things like that.
So in regards to the, um. The process of securing a spot. What my suggestion was is since it is a park. Railroad park, that it should be probably seen by parks and recs the same way that you would reserve a shelter house. You could reserve a spot at railroad park as a food truck. And at that point. Parks and Recs would be able to collect a fee if there was a fee to be charged for. Uh, parking at railroad park. And then at that point, the city would also. Um, of who was parked when. At railroad park. And that is a process that parks and recs already has developed and is already using for other. Um, permits and for other. Reservations whenever it comes to parks in Odessa.
Well, she brought up fees, let's get into fees. Further discussion was held regarding the fee for use of railroad parks, it was acknowledged that there is a cost to the city. For maintenance of the area, the city does provide trash cans which are being used. And as we know with the downtown sidewalks, there's an eventual cost. To concrete maintenance. There's an unseen cost in city insurance and infrastructure. Personal property taxes not paid to the city. From out of town mobile food vendors for those costs. But vendors based within the city limits do pay personal property tax for those costs. The time requirement for collection of the fee may end up costing more. Than the fee collected. More discussions required to establish a fee. Or modify a business license or waive any change for mobile food vendors.
So I have a question. Trash. I've looked multiple times, we don't have trash cans there.
We just added one a couple of months ago.
All right, well. So that's a cost that is now there that wasn't there before.
And the ordinance, the ordinance requires that they have their own.
They truck it in, truck it out.
They have their, it's in the ordinance that they require their own trash receptacle. We added one for more, so park attendees to be able to utilize. As a resident.
I don't think that's a justifiable argument.
While it is existing in the ordinance during our discussion, Ty was completely unaware of and said that he does not provide receptacle. So I don't think that it's the case that everyone's aware that that is a requirement and that it is happening. And I think that's another thing with permitting it through parks and recs. Where parks and recs would be able to say, where can I send confirmation of your reservation? Send an email that has a quick list of, these are the requirements to be there. And this is proof of your reservation if someone from the city were to approach you and ask. If you've done that. Um, and those kind of quick notes like providing your own receptacle. And just like a quick glance of the organs itself could be provided in that.
I would agree on that. Off the other ordinance, and I think it's, um. All business, it's a possibility, you know, the ordinance for your business too.
Hi, you wanna address the fee?
Address the fee? Um, as far as the fee goes. None of the food trucks that. Operate regularly, I've spoke to in Odessa are on board for it. The market to serve here is very low compared to other places. If we have more to pay to actually serve here. Then it just builds up business expenses that are unnecessary to us, given that we're all on this, we just. Go wherever it's gonna make the most money. Wherever has the most economic investment. I completely understand that, um, reasons for having a fee. Um, just now that you may drive away some business if, if you do that, including locals that. Live here and they operate here regularly. Um, I've been given feedback that a lot of. That have no interest in serving in the railroad park if they have to pay a fee. Um. Now, a lot of us work together anyways with other local businesses. We have no problem with just working with another business and setting up there instead. So, um, if you guys do that, you'll probably see less food trucks there. Um, same thing with a reservation. Uh, there's just more step, you're adding more steps that aren't gonna get the results you want. Um, as far as the trash service goes now. Uh. In ordinance with it, if. What I would say is you're saying, you're saying of a seating area for someone to sit there and eat, some trucks do. Then have a trash receptacle, if you're not, just carry out, go home. There's no reason to be worried about that. You already had to clean up the area around you anyways, make sure you're not leaving trash laying around. So that's one way to put that, there's no real need to have a trash, if providing a trash service. Uh. When nobody's gonna be hanging around. It's not really a big deal to me because I keep an extra trash can in the back of my truck. Uh, for, then these that require that stuff, but. Um, that's just mine, but on it, honestly, it really just needs to be left the way that it is. Uh. His business is our own wheels, that'll just get up and go, we're, we're the return on investments best. So, I'm trying to. Keep food trucks in the city as much as possible to provide variety to Odessa, it needs to obviously be the main focus. That's how I look at it.
Could I, could I address the parks and rec, um, you know, aspect of, I'm on the park board, so. Could I maybe address that?
Oh, sure.
So, um. Parks and rec department, um, in this town is, is basically one person and that's Lindsay Adams. Um, there's other employees, they do maintenance and such, but. Um, I will say vehemently that this isn't something she's gonna want, uh, participate in. She's already overworked, in my opinion. Um, so a reservation system that involves calling her, which their office is only open. Three days a week for more, for limited hours. And their website isn't, doesn't have any, you know, capabilities for anything, you know, like this online. So asking her, you know, to have another thing put on her. Um. When my understanding is, the railroad park is, is. For lack of a better term, you know, um. Non, non functioning park, you know, it's, 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 it's the least maintenance, you know, it's, it's. And the, and, and my, and that was a question, is the concrete part of the park because? We've never talked about like maintenance or anything like that. We talked about maintenance in our parts or meetings towards the, you know. Flowers and the grass, but we've never talked about maintaining the concrete pad, so. I, you know, I don't wanna speak for Lindsay, but just knowing her well enough, I know this really isn't something that's gonna fall in her, for you and she's not really gonna. Want to direct, you know, hours to, to these reservations, so thank you.
I'll note this too. Uh, with a reservation system, if you are paying a balance, a lot of trucks. It's in their interest to follow up with those balances afterwards because, uh, affected by weather. So like, let's say rain comes in, I already. Had to reserve that spot. And I already gotta pay for it, then yes, you've already got skin in the knee. But, uh, they might not come back, cause like, well, I already got to pay to use that space versus. I use that space now to follow up and pay my balances too. So that's one way to look at it.
And to pay after the use.
Yeah, if you're going to enforce like that. Then it needs to be used to follow up and repay a balance. Um. That's the only feasible way in this line of work. That somebody would keep consider that as well too.
Is it common for cities to provide? Property for food trucks to park at no cost of food trucks?
At no cost of, um.
Do you experience that in any other cities?
No, and, but. A lot of. A lot of other cities have more. Uh. Have more events and stuff like that going on that bring in food traffic. Um, I think businesses working together. And the city hopes and things, um. Sometimes they do, I know like Blue Springs, when they have events, uh. That are using parks, uh, sometimes there will be a, a vendor fee needs to be paid. Stuff like that. I'll retract what I said, yes, it's a pretty common thing, it's not a general space that's provided all the time. But they provide more events. That food trucks can work in and you have to pay that fee if there is a fee. Um, it's really. There's no consistency to it, I'll say that. I mean, I was at an event with, uh. It was considered Jackson County Parks and Rec at, um. Out East on the Way. And for Christmas in the sky, we had to pay for that. Uh, but we paid on the spot, we didn't pay the, you know, to it.
Each event? Is it fee or is it, I mean, flat fee for the life?
It's the, no, each event would have a fee, you know, it would either be, the fee would either be. A flat rate of fifty. Each event that does have a fee. Would either be a flat rate or, um, a percentage of your sales. Um. Most mobile vendors would prefer a percentage of your sales. Uh. Does then, uh. You know what your business expenses are going to be totally for the day versus. Oh, I had a, you know, five hundred dollars and I only, that's basically thirty percent of my sales for the day. On top of my business expenses, they're not coming back. So. That, that would sum up that answer.
Thank you.
I know this isn't what anybody that I wanna hear, but. I don't think there should be a fee, I realize it's city property. I don't think there should be a fee for these guys. I think they're doing us a service. By giving in, giving us some variety. And it's fun to go to a food truck. You know? I just, I just.
On that, I'll note, I'll note there's some miscommunications, a lot will think that you are only allowed to serve at railroad park. When the ordinance, uh, we've been aware of this in our meeting too, the ordinance explains, as long as you're not impeding traffic anywhere in the way. You're not pushing the fifty feet to the, uh, entry to the restaurant. And you have, uh. Um, permission if you're parking in front of a business or in business parking lot. Um, there's so many places, uh, still in Odessa where people can park and not, don't worry about all this stuff, but even on. On Second Street, stuff like that. Um, and it. Isn't. There, there's more places than just railroad park, there's a miscommunication, a lot of people think that's the only place. But the communication is more so, that is only for space provided by the city. And so that's why a lot of people set up there, there's there's miscommunication about that, they think that that's where the only place they're allowed to serve.
And it's pretty convenient.
It is convenient, yeah. So I'll note that, that's probably why a lot, a lot of this happens at railroad park, because of that miscommunication.
I also think that, I, I agree, that's making a reservation. And like he said. Rains. Nobody's gonna go to a food truck to drink. And if you've already made a reservation, you feel like you have to.
You got skin in the game, you earned money invested, now you have to go and then you're not gonna make the sales that you want.
Yeah, I, I. I. I think we oughta just let them do what they do. Go on.
So I, I, I will counter that, although I do agree, should be, be like, we'll counter that on behalf of the brick and mortars. They have skin in the game no matter what, because of their investment. And so. I, I don't know whether that's a decent argument against.
But I don't think there's been a food truck put a brick and mortar out of business.
Correct. Agreed, but. The brick and mortars do have a lot invested as well, they have a lot variables as well.
Sorry.
That, that they can't control, but they lose out perturbations, well, just like a food truck or. Having to pay a fee and then not being able to go, so.
But the brick and mortar, most of them are open every day.
Depend, no matter what the weather is.
Exactly, they, they don't have to worry about the weather, they don't have to worry about making a reservation. All they gotta do is worry about whether they give their best friend a coffee, but. That's, that's.
The summary spec. What's the nuance there?
And I will say too that, um. Food trucks still have to provide a business license, which is a sixty dollar. Expense, so it's equal to the brick and mortar, they each have to pay the sixty dollar business license fee.
And they're not in town. Years often. You know? And if you charge them. So they're gonna quit coming to town, they're gonna, we're gonna lose money that way.
But you don't have to charge them if they're gonna park at like level up foundation. They can park there for free, they can park at Waters for free with Waters' permission, or at Nerds for free. We're talking about city property being used for profit. At no expense to other businesses, whenever other businesses, brick and mortars are paying an extravagant amount. And contributing to jobs all year long. They're contributing to sales tax all year long, they're there on the rainy days whenever people aren't coming to the food trucks. Because they don't wanna get out in the rain, they're still there, their employees are still there, your, their utilities are on. They're paying property taxes for those days, they're contributing to infrastructure. They're doing all of those things all year round.
I understand that, yeah.
And so it's not, we're not gonna run food trucks out of Odessa by telling them they can't park on city property for free. We're not gonna, that's not what's gonna happen, they're gonna go somewhere else in Odessa. But they're not gonna say, oh, well, they won't let us park at railroad park for free, so we're gonna go. That's not what's gonna happen. And if it, if that is what happens, then that's pretty tribal-ish. There's other places, that's what he said, there's other places, even along Second, they can park for free. So it's not going to run up their costs and run them out of Odessa.
So what would be the difference, I mean, other than it's city property? That.
So with parking on a city street, which the ordinance allows them to, as long as they're not beating traffic.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a city street. And you're not gonna charge them to park on the city street.
Right, like I could park in the sidewalk literally right in front of railroad park and not on railroad park park property, I avoid that.
You can't, because you have, you can only take up one parking spot and you have to be serving.
Smart there.
And you have to be facing the sidewalk.
Okay, I was. Facing the sidewalk, that's a problem.
Mayor.
There, it.
What's the resolution that we're seeking? From the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we need to move along, so. I need to decide whether it's gonna be, you know, or seriously, we're gonna look at fees. And I would say that if we're gonna. Now, this is something to consider, is if you do fees for the food trucks, you're also better down the road, you're gonna have to put fees on the farmers. And anybody who uses city's property.
What about selling corn, you know, melons, selling Christmas trees?
You gotta, you gotta consider that, all that too, um.
Take out the food trucks.
Yeah.
There's one more item, that group of fees, it's, is there any interest in. Changing either the number of trucks at railroad park? Starting a fee? Or a stand machine or whatever, any reservation system?
I think the other thing we spoke about was distance.
I'm sorry.
I think the other thing we spoke about was distance. I think the other thing we spoke about was distance from, from current restaurants.
The next question.
And we said they had the ten feet apart?
The food trucks need to be ten feet apart from each other, the units do, per fire code.
Fire code.
Yeah.
Is this, is this the only? Discussion and meeting that you, you, you three or have? Is this gonna continue?
No.
This, this, this is more to decide here from hearing this, hopefully. Um, whether or not it wants to change the order.
Well, to your question, the board could decide we want a further discussion to, yeah, yeah, seeing that's appropriate. Yeah, so if it doesn't have to die, it's.
If there was a further discussion, it just have to be whatever, whatever the fee would be.
I think we can handle that.
Okay, uh, I think that might be why it's just a. Put, you know, have, have further discussion, talk about fees, how much is reasonable, if there's a fee, how it affects other people using.
Alright, mayor, I'm comfortable with, staff can do the research on what the fee should need to be, just to simplify things.
But before you do that, none of us said we wanted a fee. We need to determine we want.
Hypothetically.
Yeah, if, yeah, if the fee should be established, you need to talk about and direct city administrator to do that work. So is that what you wanna do?
I'm a no.
I'm a no.
No, 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 no P.
No P.
So we gotta know, and then I don't wanna know. I think that's the majority, so we just move along, that's a no.
So, just for clarification, are we making no changes to the ordinance? Are there some changes that?
Couple things, that topic.
Oh.
And the last part. Uh, the fifty foot rule, discussion was held on keeping the fifty foot limit. Or increasing it to a hundred or two hundred feet, we discussed the impact. Of competition and our limitations on protecting against competition and the differences of investment and operating cost. Between uh business types, consensus could not be achieved and more discussion is necessary. The fifty foot rule is that mobile vendors selling food or drink may not park within fifty feet. Of the main entrance of a restaurant during the hours in which food or drink is sold within such restaurant. Without permission.
So the fifty feet now. So those that park at railroad park, how far away are they, where are they parked in the nearest distance, the nearest.
Well, if you measure diagonally from. What's a store on the corner, pardon? Right, so hardly measure diagonally to railroad park across the intersection, that would be your closest.
Okay.
Yes.
Good, I think it's a good hundred feet.
But railroad park is not the only place that a truck can be subjected.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, but they still, they're still not fifty feet, I mean, they can park anywhere as long as they're not.
Fifty feet isn't very far. It really didn't. The length of the house, basically. Not your house.
Question. Starting with, is that fifty foot rule apply only for railroad park? Or does it apply for all?
Doesn't specify any markups.
So can a railroad park, or can a food truck park next to Hartland? On tree.
Does Hartland sell food? I don't.
As long as she wasn't open.
It would say, the, what I'm reading the ordinance just off of the, the staff report, and it says. Mobile vendors selling food or drink may not park within fifty feet of the main entrance of a restaurant. During the hours in which food or drink is sold, so the business would have to be open. Uh, within such res- re- restaurant without express written permission from the restaurant, all measurements. Are made from the closest point on the mobile food unit to the main entrance of the restaurant.
Well, to answer your question, they could not park there when she's open, because that would be open fifty feet, right? But if she was closed, they could park there without.
So the differences were, the question is, should that?
So I'm interested, it says consensus did not be achieved in more discussion. What was some of that discussion grow?
Then it should be, uh. More than distance, I think two hundred feet was what Terrica had recommended is when she first spoke to the board.
Yeah, so I'm happy to speak to that. I um, I looked up regulations for several cities. Buckner, since it's two hundred feet from another restaurant, Richmond, it's sixty feet. Um, Casey, Mo, it's fifty to a hundred, depending on the zone. Uh, Lee Summit, it's sixty, Havenfield's a hundred and fifty. Harrisonville a hundred, Oak Grove one hundred, um, Pacific Missouri, a hundred and fifty, Sunset Hill, twenty. Plus a hill a hundred, Carney a hundred and fifty, Ole Miss a hundred and fifty, so it's fifty is very, very minimal. Whenever it comes to the state of Missouri and what it usually is, and there's, most of these cities also have an additional. Um, that is like a hundred feet from crosswalks or intersections, or fifteen feet from an entrance or driveway. In addition to the distance that they have to be parked from um, brick and mortar restaurants. Uh, and I know that during our discussions, a lot of what I heard back from that was that. Brick and mortars are afraid of competition, and that's not the case. Um, for instance, Casey's, the old Casey's building. There is a, let me tell you the exact word for it, um, there's verbiage on the deed.
Okay.
Um.
From deep blocks, over two years.
Right, it's fifteen years from the date that it's sold, that no one can, that owns that property can sell pizza. Gasoline, a stick of gum. So there's large corporations that see value in this. Um, it's, it's not just like brick and mortars that are scared of competition from food trucks. It's something that's very normal in other cities, um, and with larger corporations.
Well, at a hundred and fifty feet or two hundred feet difference, isn't gonna impact competition. If the choice is, is between someone, uh, just take that coffee shop as an example, if someone. Uh, has a choice between parking in front of the coffee house or going to a coffee truck. Two hundred feet away. If they wanna go to the coffee truck, they're gonna go to the coffee truck, you know? Whether it's two hundred feet that they have to go. To get the coffee wherever they wanna get it, that two hundred and fifty isn't gonna make the difference to them. With it. I, I'm, I'm saying two hundred feet isn't gonna change anything, other than it's gonna spread about for them, so. Fifty feet is pretty close.
Yeah, fifty feet is very close.
Yep. That's nice.
Well, we'll make everybody happy, let them know. I mean, is that, is that what you're asking for, a hundred feet?
Maybe, we, we think that it should be increased, for sure.
Everybody go to the hundred feet.
I'd like to know something first.
Sure.
So what information she brought to you guys, I mean, either ordinances, that's fine, those are not competitive markets at all. Kansas City is the most competitive market. Um, I have not seen one hundred feet within uh, any of my experience with this for five years now. Um, out there, I've seen fifty feet. Uh, I would go off that measure based off of competition. Um, the other cities that she mentions have them, I don't even see food trucks in. Um, and if they are, it's because they're working with another business, that they're paying rent to use their space. Um. Changing the ordinance from fifty feet to one hundred feet, that directly may not affect anything. Um, but if you're trying to uh keep the field level with the. Who these businesses that are on wheels can go, um, I would wanna stick with who the competing, most competing market is. Um. I would advise uh mobile businesses to expand as much as possible, not just. Stay in one city or stay in one county. Um. That's the way that I look at that. The cities that she listed, most of them, they don't even have a competitive market for food trucks to come there, unless it's anything that's hosted by the city. So, I'll note that.
I think it's important to remember too, um, I, I like food trucks too, but I think, um. Remembering our brick and mortar and the fact that. Um, they've expressed some concern, and I think we should listen to that, make our decisions based on, excuse me. Some of their concerns, and that, um, some concessions could be made in both directions. So, you know, we, we need the brick and mortars, we need food trucks, but we have to have them. So, I would be fine with that.
Oh, so I also want to make it important to know, one that I got in trouble with. The Downtown Collective does not lobby on all brick and mortars. And there are many brick and mortars that are not in agreement with the Downtown Collective on this topic. They may have their own opinions, but they are not being backed by the Downtown Collective, nor are they endorsing the Downtown Collective. In their effort to do this, this, in my opinion, is, how, how many downtown businesses are you actually representing for the Downtown Collective?
We represent all of the whole downtown for revitalization.
But how many have you paid into your organization that you're lobbying for? Because it's a paid organization, I.
It's not a paid organization, we don't have membership fees.
Okay, but I, I know I had multiple downtown brick and mortars saying, we do not agree with what they're saying that, that we want. So, and it's why everybody know that, it's not all downtown brick and mortars are not being represented today by the Downtown Collective, even though intentions are good. It's not widespread with all downtown businesses.
That being said, um, there are any style representing every food truck.
No, he is not, agree.
Sure.
Agree, he is not.
I don't know if that's necessarily important, Colin, to me, that fifty foot limit. Has more to do with parking space, particularly with our D I T, but you know, I. When we have things downtown that eats up my parking space during tax season, and I really appreciate. One year when someone wanted to have a special event in the middle of tax season, the board of Alderman asked, well, have you checked with Bruce?
Yeah.
I really appreciate them thinking about how that impacts a business when something's going on during the virtual time of the year. Um, you know, so to me, that distance has more to do with parking spaces available. Than competition or anything else. People are gonna go where they wanna go, so I don't think it has any effect on competition. I don't think that, that. Uh, amount of feet has anything to do with someone being afraid of competition. Parking spaces for the competition.
Agreed, but they're not parking with that now.
So I have no problems with a hundred foot or two hundred foot. Left.
Anybody else have a number in mind?
How can we know it's seventy-five? Because, because it's currently fifty, you want a hundred. You said, let's try to compromise and keep people in mind, okay? Let's basically split it, seventy-five.
Probably, I can be on board with that. I do agree with the safety issues and parking. I don't think it's gonna make any difference to competition. And the reason why I brought that up is because we do wanna remember our brick and mortars. But we also need to remember the Downtown Collective is not being supported in this effort, this specific effort by all the Downtown reports, that's why I made that.
I don't have an impact, but that's not my suggestions. Excellent, I need a number.
I'm gonna say it.
So let's see, show of hands, hundred. Two, three, seventy-five, two, three, two, change your orders to a hundred. What's next, Bruce?
That's it.
I wanna thank Terrica and Kai for the simple discussions they've had to get the summer put together, a lot of time. On both parts, it's extremely appreciated and very grateful, thank you. Okay. Alright. Next scheduled meeting is Monday, December twenty-second, now is the time for Alderman requests for the agenda. None, alright.
Mayor, can you, uh, before you close the meeting, can you just remind people that we do have bathrooms available, just not, they're out the back?
Oh, okay, um, one of the issues in the building that are, um. Uh, fortified, that's, I was gonna say. Fortified on the outside of the building for news, uh, just cleaning the center, um. Until you get, till that inside gets fixed, and that for sure, that's gonna be.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
By our water and wastewater department.
Alright, should be fixed by tomorrow.
Thank you.
And with that, I would take a motion to each other.